Tonight, we have one public hearing. But we'll start with roll call.
Board Member Bartline?
Here.
Board Member Bolt?
Here.
Board Member Duzan?
Here.
Board Member Elrod?
Board Member Graham?
Here.
Board Member Moore?
Here.
Board Member Rudnicki?
Here.
Board Member Samuelson?
Here.
And Board Member Schroeder. We have a quorum.
Thank you. First item is the review of the minutes from September 23, 2013. Has the board had a chance to review those? And are there any comments, changes, revisions? Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Let's go ahead and vote.
Only four of us.
Vote, David.
Dave, you got a vote?
Do you like the minutes or don't you?
You can abstain, I guess.
I'm abstaining. I wasn't here, so...
Oh. No, you shouldn't vote then. We weren't here. He shouldn't.
Okay.
I wasn't planning.
So if that's the case, Dave wasn't here and I wasn't here, so our votes should not be considered.
I wasn't there either.
Was anybody here last?
I was here.
I spoke a lot of parroting.
Okay.
We have four votes, I think. Yeah, four votes in favor. Approval?
Yeah.
Okay. At this point, we have scheduled or unscheduled appearances. And I don't know if we have any scheduled. So that leaves unscheduled. Is there anyone in attendance who'd like to address the board on a topic other than the hearing tonight? Yes, ma'am.
I'm Carol Bree-Zeck, and I live in the 4th District. This is more about the process tonight. I think it would be real helpful for those of us in the audience to kind of understand how the process is going to be tonight. We've got two documents. Are we going to be discussing just the one, the citywide? Are we going to get into the neighborhood? And how much time do we have? And I would like to suggest that, seeing that there's so few of us here, that maybe you might change your format a little bit and take a section at a time and allow the public to discuss with you the one section and then move on to the next session, rather than have us come up here and read through a litany of Chapter 1.2 or Page 1.2, Page 1.5, and give you our comments that go through the entire document. So if you would help us out to explain, not just tonight, but where you go from here with the process. Thank you.
Can I address that? Or...
It actually is part of our presentation, so...
Yeah, it's part of the presentation as to the process. And there will be some discussion about where we go from here. Anyone else? Yes, Pam.
Hi, Planning Board. My name is Pam Chadbourne. I live in District 1 in the downtown residential area. So my question is also about process. I'm very confused about what we're supposed to discuss tonight. And the public has had less than two weeks to look at the comprehensive plan. This is also, as was, this is not a quasi judicial matter. This is a legislative matter. It is a policy matter that affects future work. And what that means is that you have far more latitude in this matter than you do in a quasi judicial. And the reason for that is actually, one of the primary reasons in government statements in the Colorado statutes specifically, is to engage the public. I'm going to point out to you that this whole year, we've had a number of resigning matters, and it can't have escaped anyone here, that the public has become very engaged and in pretty much a negative way against what the city has proposed or what the city seems to be supporting from applicants. This divergence between the public and the city's point of view is in large measure due to the lack of an agreed-upon consensual comprehensive plan. It's an important thing to do. But what's very important is to get consensus on it, to have a process that allows the public to engage with you over a number of sessions and for you to inform us, for you to include us in the process. What happened at the last session to me was that the suggestion was made that this is quasi judicial and we'll just get through what we need to get through for our purposes. And this is one of my major concerns with what I see in my city government now. Guys, we're here. We're out here. We care about what you're doing. We have shown up in great numbers during this year. Please, please, in your process, include us. I do not understand why. There's suddenly, we have to, we will have a quick public hearing, and then we're going to vote and get it to the City Council, and you haven't even given us two weeks to look at this document. After this past year, that's an extraordinary act, and not in a good way. So when I speak, I'm not going to speak about the plan. I'm going to speak about the process. But this is why. Please reflect back on the last year. Please engage us in the process. Think about us out here. We are here. We want to know what you're doing and why. Explain it to us, and not in a, you know, short thing. Give us a whole session where we can go through this and talk about it. So that's my plea. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Jack Randall, 2000 West Main, 26,000 West Main, 2600 West Main. Moved me back into town. I came down late to get to here. There's not even a copy of what you're going to be discussing up there for us. There's 72 pages, as I remember. I hear some kind of a train coming down the tracks because you've already set the date that this is going to the Littleton City Council. And it sure seems to me that you people, you seven, are the ones that makes the decisions on a comprehensive plan based upon your experience, your thoughts, and what's going on. And you haven't even heard it, but it's going to council on November 5. I urge you to take the time to hear this thing and go through it. This is comprehensive. You've got to talk about Broadway. You've got to talk about Littleton Boulevard. You've got to talk about it all. And the papers that I saw on the web didn't include that. So I urge you to consider this tonight and take what you can get and carry the meeting forward so that you can get the comments from the rest of the people. And maybe there'd be a copy back up there when we come in for the next hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other topics on unscheduled business? And by the way, they just put copies back there of the document being presented. Let's move forward to the public hearing. And tonight, we are considering the recommendation to the City Council of an amendment to the comprehensive plan replacing the following sections: preference introduction, accomplished policies of continued importance, community-wide goals and policies. And Dennis is going to go through exactly what is being considered tonight and what is not being considered tonight, and the process as we move forward, so that everybody is clear on that. So Dennis?
Chairman, thank you. As you said, we're doing the public hearing tonight before the Planning Board. This is the first of several public hearings, and it's consistent with the provisions of the city code, which say that the board shall recommend to City Council comprehensive plans to guide future growth and development within the city. So the role of the Planning Board is to actually make a recommendation to City Council. And the reason the comprehensive plan is so important, as we're all going to hear tonight and we've all discussed over the last couple of years, is that it really is the framework for everything else. The comprehensive plan is the base. It's the foundation for the specialty citywide plans, such as bicycle plans or open space plans, park plans. Whatever it might be that covers the whole city, you have to be consistent with what the goals are in this comprehensive plan, what the vision of the comprehensive plan is. The specialty area plans, again, if you've got something that talks about station area, for example, and we've looked at doing station areas for mineral station and for downtown station area, those need to be consistent, again, with the direction given in the comprehensive plan. The small area plans, and that includes both neighborhood plans and corridor plans. And as you know, we have a series of neighborhood plans that are in place and we're bringing forward. We also have one corridor plan, the Santa Fe Corridor Plan, which we're bringing forward, and that's part of the second document. We'll talk a little bit more about that. And then guidelines and code. The zoning is particularly important, that that be consistent with and actually implement the comprehensive plan. When you go to any kind of legal case, any kind of legal view on this, they always go back to the comprehensive plan. Is this decision consistent with what you're trying to achieve? And that's true for everything that's land use related in the city. And then development and zoning review. Actually, when we get into the review process itself, we need to make sure that what we're looking at is the correct interpretation of what we're, what we have in terms of guidelines and code. And then when we get into actually instruction, inspection, and construction, again, all that is following what the vision was, what was in the plan. And when we see construction, we actually have some kind of sense of, yeah, this is what we're trying to achieve, whether it's that or it's an activity or it's a lack of construction in area. Sometimes it means we don't do something somewhere, but it's consistent with the comprehensive So the policy question for this meeting is, should the Planning Board recommend the citywide plan as an amendment to the comprehensive plan? And that's kind of what we're looking at, and what Randy just said, is that this is looking at an amendment to the comprehensive plan, and it's a citywide plan section, an element of the comprehensive plan itself. And then when council looks at, they'll be saying, should the council approve the citywide plan as an element to the, of the comprehensive plan, an amendment to the existing comprehensive plan? And the comprehensive plan, as we know, is made up of many parts. It's the citywide plan that we've been talking about. It's the downtown plan that was adopted in 2012. It's the corridor plans and the small area plans. It's the, it's open space plans. There are a myriad of plans that come from this and can't all be done at the same time. But when the downtown plan was being done, Planning Board particularly felt a need for having that kind of citywide vision, that kind of citywide sense of where does downtown fit? What is the need for this? And why are we doing it? And that's why I think there was such a push to go back to doing the citywide element of the comprehensive plan itself. So once again, as Randy said, we're actually replacing the following sections. So as we all know, the Blue Plan, the Green Plan, the Comp Plan is the plan that is still current, and we're recommending that we replace certain sections of that. The preface, the introduction, the accomplished policies of continued importance, community-wide goals and policies, community-wide goals and community-wide policies. And we're replacing those with the citywide plan, which includes those elements or variation on what you, as Planning Board, and what you heard from the public thought was important. So the citywide plan does replace that section. The rest of the plan stays in place. We're not talking about replacing that. We actually produced two different documents. We've got the all-new plan, the citywide plan, which has the picture of the runners on the front, same cover but a different photograph on the left with the neighborhood photo. And that is simply reformatted plans where we've gone through and we've looked at a new cover, new photos, new maps, a coordinated format, so it looks consistent with the citywide plan and consistent with the downtown plan that was adopted. And then we're talking about recommendations in the citywide plan for updating or creating plans for all those neighborhoods, all those areas that are in that second section, small area plans. We have some neighborhoods, as we'll talk about, maps that show that there was no plan done for those areas when the, when the Comp Plan was done, either because they were not annexed to the city or, you know, things have moved around since then. But all of the southwest area does not have a plan. We've got smaller areas around Littleton High School. Others, they don't have plans. So as we go through and make those adjustments and update those plans, all those areas will need to be included as well. The exception of this is Trailmark, which actually did not have a neighborhood plan. It really had a development plan in place. And so we've removed that just because it wasn't a neighborhood plan, but we have a recommendation in the citywide plan to create a new plan for Trailmark Neighborhood. And that's a pretty high priority, I think, in terms of looking at all the neighborhood plans and saying, you know, there's a real push to look at what needs to be done citywide for those. I want to talk a little bit about the process for developing the citywide plan. You, as Planning Board, went through, I think, an unprecedented public outreach process. It was very impressive, I think, in terms of what was put together. And we had everything from beach balls being thrown around that said, you know, join up with inspirelittleton.org and get online and tell us what you think. We're throwing around at Hudson Gardens concerts to public meetings that we had in conjunction with the meetings that City Council was having. We went to Western Welcome Week. We went to Wild on Littleton, and we had booths, and we talked to people, and we asked them to tell us what they thought was important about Littleton. What do you like about Littleton? What do you like most about Littleton? What do you think might make Littleton an even better place to live than it is now? And we got hundreds and hundreds of responses on that. In fact, we've had just a tremendous outreach altogether, I'd say. We had, as I said, sticky notes and discussions. We had hundreds and hundreds of ideas that people gave us. The online participants, we've had 626 participants online on the Inspire Littleton site, which is a really great percentage for a city of our size. Online ideas, we had 545. Online comments, 852. Online visitors, 6,918. And total online page views, 51,128. And that's, that was as of Friday, so the numbers are higher now than they were then. But again, that's a great response, and it's a great interaction. And we really tried to combine things. We knew that when we have public meetings, it's hard to get people out. It's very difficult for people to, during the week, to spend time away from home, away from family, away from jobs. And so we did these online things. We did the meetings. We went out to them. And I think, as a result, we got a great response and got a lot of input. The issues and comments that came out of that process led to the discussion that Planning Board had, that you had for over a year, looking at, here's what we've heard. How do we respond to that? What does that mean to us in terms of what are the key issues? What are the responses? What should we be looking at? What are the opportunities that we have out there that people are seeing? That kind of discussion then led to the plan, and that's where we are tonight. I'm going to stop at this point. We have a lot more if you, if we need it for discussion. We have slides of other things as well. But I think in terms of opening up for public comment, this might be a good place to stop and just say, this is what got us to this point, and we're ready to hear the comments from the public.
And what is the process?
Process from here is that we're talking about possibly Planning Board, and this is a discussion you will have, having a study session and following this meeting where you'll be able to respond and kind of talk about all the comments that you heard tonight, all the things you've gotten in the mail, all the things you've heard over the last two years, and how do these things all fit together? Plus, your own ideas in terms of what changes need to be made. And we found some things in the plan that need to be changed as well. We know that there's some things in there that we would like to improve. And so have a study session to do that. Then come back on the 28th of this month for a second public hearing. We'll continue, we recommend you continue this public hearing, so there could be additional comment that night. So we have additional introduction to people tonight. They've got another two weeks to review the plan and talk about it after having this initial introduction. And then on the 28th, we would hope that Planning Board can reach consensus and make a decision, then make a recommendation to City Council. Tentatively, we do have City Council public hearings scheduled for November 5. But, you know, again, that's tentative. We have not done anything specific with that. We have not posted that. We've not advertised it. So it's open to, you know, where Planning Board wants to go with that. And again, your charge is to make that recommendation in the fashion you feel appropriate.
Okay. Thank you. Does the board have any questions for Dennis before he sits down? At this point, or we'll come back to it if we need to.
I do have one question, Dennis.
Okay.
If I may.
Sure.
The reality is, this is the document that we're reviewing that's got those changes in it. The reality in this document is, from 2.1 to 2.12 are the only things that are new and different information.
That's correct.
The rest of it is just...
Introduction or...
Introduction, substance, change of maps, definitions, and the appendix in the back.
Absolutely.
So we're really only talking about six or seven pages.
That's right.
New information.
Yep.
Thank you.
And as you know, the intent of Planning Board is to keep it short. I think we've all agreed that the most effective plans are the shorter ones, the briefer, that people can actually remember. What are they trying to achieve? What are they trying to do at this level, you know, with the citywide plan? When we get into more detailed plans, we'll get longer plans, as you know, from the downtown plan.
Just for clarification of everyone here, we will get into neighborhood plans at a later time.
Correct. Absolutely. And the citywide plan does make recommendations in terms of, let's look at all the plans. We actually have two grants that we've applied for and have been granted. One for doing a, an activity area plan for the downtown light rail station area, which will include parts of Littleton Corridor, Boulevard Corridor, so we'll get to redo that. And then we also have a grant that was approved for looking at the mineral station and the part of the Santa Fe Corridor as well. So we have both those online with good funding in place. So, and then we're looking at doing, you know, as the board sees a need, you know, we'll set priorities for where do we need to proceed. So, absolutely.
Money available for those studies? Is there a time limit on them? If we decide that Broadway Corridor is more important than Littleton Boulevard, for instance, can we override and...
I don't, I don't know that we could do that. We could certainly possibly switch the two that we've got. And we've talked about that as a possibility, that we may switch mineral, mineral station, the downtown station, you know, which is more important, which is more critical at the moment to go forward with. So those two, we couldn't switch probably because there was quite an application process that went through, had to justify why we were doing those two stations in the areas.
Understanding the money is for those, but is there a time limit on use of the money to do those studies of those specific areas?
Yes, there is. Yeah, we have to do them within that timeframe, so...
And when is the, what is the time?
2014, 2015. We need to be having them done.
Got some time then.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Did we do sign-up sheets or is that necessary?
We have sign-up sheets, and I'll bring them down.
Okay. While he's getting the sign-up sheets, I just want to, again, repeat that the focus is on the citywide document. The neighborhood plans have not been touched at all. We didn't want to go ahead and make changes to the neighborhood plans without involving the neighbors. And so that's another process, thank you, that will occur at a, at a future date, depending upon the priorities of which neighborhood is taken on first, and then also related to the grants. The grants relate to some of the neighborhoods. And so you're perfectly welcome to, to make comments about the neighborhood plans, but just understand that if you're making a comment about something that wasn't changed in the neighborhood plan, that's because we didn't change it. We haven't touched it. It's just repeated as-is from before so that we didn't make any assumptions without talking to the neighbors first. So the focus tonight, and the focus of the amendment, is on the citywide section in the preamble or the preface and all the other things. The other thing that, you know, was, has been updated, which I think is wonderful, are the graphics. And I'll also point out, there's a, there's a few things graphically that have to be tweaked yet, one being some photographs. We want to swap some out that, so they become more Littleton photographs.
Yep.
And so if there are any thoughts about that, I can assure you, because I'm wanting it to happen, we want Littleton photographs represented. Now, there may be photographs that are examples of future uses or future environments that, if in the right location in the document, are there to show what it could be in the future. But in cases where it should represent Littleton, it will represent Littleton. And so we are very cognizant, as a board, that this document is a city document, and it represents our city, our people. And we do not want to make any rash decisions. We welcome your comments. We are having a study session. Well, we have to vote tonight, which way to move, but the thought is to have a study session and another public hearing. So, you know, this is not the end, hopefully, if the board agrees. So I welcome everyone to the podium now. Let's see how many there are. So there aren't very many. I'm going to keep a clock, but I'm not going to keep a rigid clock. You know, if you go for 20 minutes, that might be a little long. But, you know, a couple, four-minute sessions, I don't know, because there's only 10 people, I think, because we want to give you an opportunity to express your thoughts. We're not necessarily going to get into a dialogue. We'll hear a public comment, and then we'll dialogue. And hopefully, the board will take notes about what was expressed, and we can address all the comments as a board. So the first...
Could I ask that if people had extensive comments relative to specific bullet points, that they email it and provide it in written fashion? Because there's no way we're going to catch it all.
Yeah, we would welcome that. If, we did get some emails already with some outline comments.
And prior to the intended study session would be most...
Yeah, prior, if, I'm pretty sure we'll have a study session, but if you have some extensive comments, please email those or get them to staff so that we can get those and have those in front of us when we, when we review the document. So before we get started, I don't know if this is proper protocol, but we have a new Planning Board member, right? Is this your first meeting?
No.
Oh, I was, I was gone. So welcome to our, to our hearing here.
What was his name?
I'm sorry. I don't know his name.
Ed Schrader.
Ed Schroeder.
Ed Schrader.
Schrader.
Schroeder, welcome.
Thanks.
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Yes, Mark.
The speakers, if they speak for four to six minutes or what have you, if the board wishes to ask some specific questions, can we engage them within reason?
Yeah, I would, I want this to be fairly open. I mean, I don't want to get into any deep, long, drawn-out debates and discussions, but I, this is a document that represents the citizens, so...
Wouldn't be a debate. It would be like a follow-up specific question.
Okay.
What did you mean by that?
Clarification. Paul Bingham. After that would be Carol Rozzek. I didn't say that very well, but...
Good evening, Planning Board. Paul Bingham, 236 West Delaware Circle in Littleton. First, I want to thank you all very much for all of your hard work you've put in on this thing. I've never gone through it, so I don't really know, but I suspect it was a lot of hard work. Second, I agree with Carol and Pam and Jack, and the thing on the 28th seems to me like a really good idea. Thank you. Also, I applaud your, your comment a little bit ago, Randy, about... Also, I applaud your comment a little bit ago, Randy, about swapping out some graphics for some Littleton photos. That'd be good. My concern is a general concern. There are a whole bunch of small plans, neighborhood plans, Littleton Boulevard Plan, South Broadway Plan, whatever. And my concern is that those plans need to be legally tied up into this comm plan from now throughout the whole shebang. And why do I say that? Twice recently, and one time, it was a pretty strong pitch for a lawyer right here in this room, attacked the Littleton Boulevard Plan as not being legally binding. And we were hanging a lot of stuff on that Littleton Boulevard Plan that night. If he had been successful, that would have blown our whole argument out of the water. So, and I've read your plan, and it talks about these separate plans, the Littleton Boulevard Plan and whatnot, but it, it's pretty loosey how they're tied into the plan, and they really, really need to be legally tied into this plan, so they're beyond any lawyer's attack. Thank you.
Thank you, that's a good point.
Carol Prezak in District Four. And I do appreciate the relaxed format, Randy, that's very nice. I would like to go through this kind of page by page, if that works, and then I've got my notes written down, and just let you know what my questions are. I'm not going to spend my time telling you what I liked about it, because I'm afraid I'd have to sit down before I tell you what I don't like. On page one, or excuse me, yeah, page 1.1, under purpose, the third sentence says, "It leads." I want to know what "it leads." It's not clear to me as I read it. Page 1.5, under planning process, I would just like to comment on what I don't really think is a large representation of comments from the community. We saw the numbers of the online participants. I signed up for Inspire Littleton. I commented it two or three times, but frankly, it didn't inspire me most of the time, so I moved on somewhere else. 100 people represents 200ths of 1% of the population, and 500 people represents 1/10th of 1%. We have a large community of folks that are not connected online, that have a lot to contribute. So I like the idea of having two opportunities to come forward to give you more input. On page 2.1, under vision for future of Littleton, I would like a better definition of what sustainable economy, environment, and society actually means. I think it's terms that mean something different to everybody who speaks them, so I would like to know what your definition is of them, and perhaps even provide an example in the definition, so it's very clear, not just today, but maybe two years from now. It also states that Littleton should be home to people of all ages and backgrounds. I would say that we can't be all things to all people, so what, to what extent will we go to accommodate making Littleton a home for all ages and backgrounds? You know, I look at this document as something that maybe nobody looks at until two years from now, and they pick it up, and they read it, but they weren't here for all of this discussion, so they need to know what you mean. You say you value livability, diversity, and progress, but I wonder who gets to define those terms? You know, we come in here on different occasions where we've used a comm plan to argue our position to support something, where someone will come in and use the very same excerpt from the comm plan to support their position to oppose it. So when you have something, value of livability, diversity, and progress, to me, that's one of those terms, or set of terms, that can be argued to support or to oppose a project. Under transformative perspectives, it says to direct change to achieve the city's vision. I don't believe the city actually has a vision. Someone does, but the city doesn't. So I want to know whose vision it is that you are trying to achieve. You want to strive for sustainability. Again, it's something that I don't understand what you mean, and I would like a definition. Page 2.3, under policies. Policy number one, it talks about more opportunities. I don't know what that means in a landlocked Littleton. I think maybe as I read a little further, you talk about annexation, maybe that's what you're talking about, I'm not sure. Under policy number three, states that retail will provide the goods needed and desired by residents. I see that's wide open to justify most any type of business, including porn and other undesirable businesses. Surely, there's a limit to what we want in Littleton. I don't think we need to provide it just because somebody says they need it or they desire it. Under policy number five, private and public investment. I would like a definition of what a private and public investment looks like. I would like an example of what a high-quality transportation alternative is. Does that mean a bicycle, or a bicycle with motor? I don't know what it means. Does it mean a big bus is going to come down in my neighborhood three times a day? And what does economically healthier mean? Is it all about retail sales tax, or does it mean something else? Policy number seven, talks about underperforming properties to be redeveloped, so they can provide a substantial mix of uses and are designed to mitigate possible negative effects on adjacent uses. Who defines underperforming? What criteria is used to define underperforming? If the property does not have a sustainable mix, is that the only reason for redevelopment? Talks about strengthening downtown. Under B, it says increasing housing diversity and densities. I would like density to be defined in this context. Under C, achieving building heights that allow for the desired mass and scale while respecting the pedestrian environment. Does Broadstone ring a bell? Staff thought it was within the mass and scale of the neighborhood, when clearly the citizens did not. This needs more definition to protect our downtown from future proposals and future staff recommendations. Page 2.5, under policies, number four, expand recreational opportunities. Is this a suggestion for Littleton to work with South Suburban to achieve this goal? Or is this going to become a new use for our tax revenue? Number five, locate parks within a half-mile radius. Would you consider adding where possible? Page 2.7, under policies. Policy number one, smart streets. I don't know what a smart street is. Would you include that in your definition? Policy number two talks about pedestrian friendliness. I live in a neighborhood where we do not have sidewalks. I don't want sidewalks. So when you get to your neighborhood plan, I'll probably be speaking up again, but as a citywide goal, if you're talking about sidewalks, I would say that it's not really a citywide goal. Maybe 90%, maybe not. You mentioned in policy number eight, metrovision, the idea of adopting it. As a citizen, I don't know what it is that you're talking about. What is metrovision? Maybe I don't like it, maybe I love it, but I don't know what it is. Could you please include what, at least the meat of the metrovision plan is, so that I know what you're talking about? Page 2.9, again, under policy number six. It says encourage and support a diversity. Is this by using our tax dollars, or is it by, and maybe for the public at home, encourage and support a diversity? And you're talking about events for the community and the city? And I want to know if you're talking about using our tax dollars? Does this become a priority for our budget? Or are you talking about support services, such as blocking off the streets, police presence, and street cleaning afterwards? 2.10, or page 2.10, action number one. It says focus public and private investments. Again, a term that I do not understand. Action, I guess, number five, under action number one. It says set the stage for new development or redevelopment. Would you please be specific about the tools that can be used to accomplish this, rather than such as? Could you be very specific and limiting, so that we know what it is you're talking about?
Excuse me, where are you on this question?
This is action number one, page 2.10.
Right.
And number five.
Thank you.
Number six, who gets to decide what is the best possible development and redevelopment? And you have another term that I do not understand. It's the economic and procedural instruments to realize this. What are economic and procedural instruments? Number seven, under action number one, what does locate and design public investments so that they optimize their potential to leverage private investments mean? I'm sure you've worked with this language for months, and you understand it, but it's not clear to me. Page 2.11, under action number two, it says use tools to set the stage. It says use tools, and then lots of other words, to set the stage. I would like for you to define the tools that would be used to set the stage. And I think it's important to limit those tools. Be very clear about what you're talking about, so we as citizens know what you're talking about. Under action number two, three, desired development. Who gets to decide what is desired? Action number three, point number one, is I'm asking if there will be a grandfathering of the city regulations and programs in conjunction with number one. And if it's going to be grandfathered in, then please state so. Number three, again, it talks about desired development. Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry, I got off. We're in action number three, but point number six, where you talk about annexations. This one's hard for me. I know Littleton's landlocked, and I think, are we going to annex Inglewood? Sheridan? I'm not sure what you're talking about. And I'm wondering how we keep our small-town feel if we're going to start annexing and increasing the size of our city. Is there a limit to how much we want to annex, in the way of property or in the way of population? The most recent example that I can come to in my head is Sterling Ranch. That was something that the City Council had talked about numerous times. Sterling Ranch, which is not anywhere close to us, would have more than doubled the size of us. That's not something I'm interested in. And if you're talking about annexation, I think you should be very clear about population and land mass that you're talking about. Maybe even give us an example, if it's not an example that you can relate to Littleton, maybe it's an example that you can relate to some other community, that would give us an idea of what's in your thinking with that. Thank you very much. I really do appreciate the relaxed format.
Hey, that was 12 minutes, so I'm really leaning.
That was a lot in 12 minutes.
But good comments.
Can we point out in the back of this, I think hopefully I have this as an appendix, and a lot of the definitions to the words you were looking for are in there?
In the definitions?
There's an appendix in the back?
I looked in definitions.
Oh, in the back of the, hopefully you guys have...
A lot of them were there, Carol, I believe, but there are some that we're missing.
Not all of them, but, yeah, but a lot of them are...
And I think Dennis is taking notes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
At one point, we had definitions of about 12 pages long, so we kind of tried to reduce that a little bit.
And after Pam will be John Watson. Let's try to shoot for that 10 to 12 minutes. If you even have that much.
So my name is still Pam Chadbourne, and I still live in downtown. My request is that you postpone formal action on the comprehensive plan to a later date, and add at least three meetings prior to action. One meeting is for public education, one is for public dialogue, and then there are response sessions. This is a legislative matter, it's not quasi-judicial, so you have the freedom and the rationale to add the meetings. And based on the rezoning meetings alone this past year, that should strongly motivate the city to communicate this information better to citizens, and create ample opportunity for citizens to input to this document. And I just want to thank Carol's thorough going through here. I can read the definitions in the back, and you know what? They're meaningless without application to specifics. And that is, I do appreciate the work you all have spent on this, but I guarantee you it becomes easier if you apply it to specifics. And part of the reason this is a laborious process is because it is general. As soon, we can't do what we want here. There are limitations to what we can do. And if you start from those restrictions and limitations, and then apply these general statements that you have in this current document to those limitations, then we will see how they apply to our lives, our neighborhoods, our city, and so will you. And you'll actually discover things that won't work. You'll discover neighborhoods where some of these ideas can't be applied, in areas. You'll also discover areas where we have great opportunities. And that's what I want to see in this document, is far more specificity based on reality, starting from a management plan. So Michael Penny ought to have a management plan for the next 20 years for the city. He definitely needs ones for the next one, two, three years to meet the budget, and then he should have one for five or 10 years. And that should be based on input from the Budget Department, and the Transportation guys, and Dr. Cog, and just make, keeping the city running. And that's a good starting place to kind of give us an idea of our playing field. And then Dr. Cog needs to be mentioned in here and the other regional plans, in the citywide plan. It's got to be there, because it limits what we can do. What we do with traffic through Littleton is totally driven by the communities that surround us. Then that flows to your statements in the plan I want to see, for populations for each one of these smaller areas that you define. So in the citywide plan, you should be giving us for five, 10, 20, 40, and 60 years, what you think the populations are going to be of each of these neighborhoods in Littleton. Along with that is a feasibility plan for transport. What are you relying on to support those populations? And the populations consist not only of residential, but also of the retail commercial mix. A plan has to show targets with timeframes. They're not cast in concrete. Nobody's saying this is what we're going to do, or what we're absolute about. They're objectives, but a plan has to have timeframes and targets that you can compare against as you go forward, and modify as you need to. And they need to be based on reality. So our money, our budget is part of that, the populations are part of that, the predicted taxing comes for each one of those timeframes is there. And then you can flow that into neighborhoods, and we'll see neighborhoods that probably aren't going to change much, and we'll see neighborhoods that are going to change a lot. And that's what should be in the citywide plan, but it'll show us that we can handle those. And Carol's questions about the public-private stuff, what's the money available for that? Well, that should be part of this plan, some kind of envelope that all of us can see and think about. I'm not saying they're going to come true. Nobody... Nobody expects a plan as written to come true. That's not why you do it. You do it because as you collect this information, it helps all of us limit our expectations but also expand our expectations where appropriate. So that's my expectation for this document is far more specificity. And I think that's what Carol is pointing out. It's not that the words aren't defined, it's that what do they mean to us? I live in downtown, guys. I want to know what you're going to do with my corner. It's very simple. But there ought to be a clue in here about what you're going to do with downtown. Specific, not just these general statements. And so not just me, but everybody who lives downtown has an idea of whether we want to move within five years, 10 years, whether we want to hang on to our property and kind of gamble to sell to a developer. But we want, I want this document, and I think it's prudent for you to make this document, help us make our decisions about our lives. Without specificity in it, we can't do that. We don't know not only what you plan, but what's possible even for Littleton. So that's the kind of thing that I think Carol's comments point out. It's not that it's a definition of words, it's that you need to show us where you're going to change things a lot. And then we need to be able to argue with you if we don't agree. There are winners and losers in the changes that are coming, and this plan really ought to start to sketch those out. The plan should not avoid conflict. It should invite these discussions before they come to conflict or loss. And that's what I'm worried about, the generalities in this plan. And Dennis already went over the schedule, which I feel is too fast. For public education, what I want to ask you for is an overview of the comprehensive plan, its legal function, how it's used in city processes, and how it interfaces with other city documents. There should be a big picture description of the restructuring of the plan. It's, management-wise for me, it's extraordinarily frustrating to hear, well, as we go along, we'll decide whether we want to do Broadway. We ought to have a management plan for producing this document now. You can always change your management plan, but where's our management of this process? We, the citizens, should know that, and you should want to know that now. We ought to be able to define these things now. So give us a big picture of how it's going to be structured. And as Paul mentioned, how do we protect ourselves legally as each one of these comes up? What is it? I think the replacement sections are unclear. Summarize, a huge thing for me is that there was no change log. There's no change log about what, even at a high level, you folks changed, deleted, added, or revised between the existing document and this one. And you know, that's a fundamental management thing. When you make a change to a document like this, you always provide your reviewers with a change log. And you do it because it helps you do your work as well. There should be rationales captured somewhere, even at a high level. And then there should be some assessment of benefits, losses, risks, and mitigations of the revised content. And there could be a creative, fun, and useful approach like how the plan would function from the viewpoints of homeowners and residents, small business owners and workers, shoppers and consumers, travelers, et cetera. And then brief Q and A.
Just so you know and everybody else, I'm going to give you a queue at 10 minutes because we don't want to be here all night with everybody.
And neither do I. And that's actually why I'm suggesting these other meetings. This is a big document. There are implications to every, well, I guess I'd say every paragraph that you folks have in there. And these would be clarified if they were extended to apply to specific examples, but they're not. And so that's why this deserves more discussion. Maybe we can help you tell, maybe we can help tell you the areas we want to know about so you can provide us that specificity.
Start wrapping it up, please.
So after that public information where you kind of give us this reason for why all these things happened and how it works, then have a dialogue meeting and let us talk back and forth. After the last year, this would be a very positive step. It has value in and of itself. There's something as important as getting the comprehensive plan going on, and that's the communication between you folks and us. So after that, there could be responses and integration in action. So I just wanted to mention some things not in the plan. There's aren't any, there aren't any rezoning areas defined. I'm absolutely positive that we need to do some rezoning. That's the intent of a revision to the comprehensive plan in my mind. The most compelling reason is define areas where you're going to rezone. Where are they? What are the rationales? That's the kind of specificity that we ought to be able to see here. What about urban renewal in eminent domain? It seems to be hinted at in the examples Carol brought up. Talk about it, bring it out in the open. Where are the opportunities for promoting infill, walkable community development? Where are the specific green and sustainability objectives? Those are just some examples. I also want to know how the transportation's going to work. I mean, that's kind of fundamental to a plan. We don't control it, it's dependent on the surrounding communities.
Thank you.
So thank you very much for letting me talk.
Good evening, members of the planning board. John Watson, 4500 West Hinsdale Avenue, Littleton District Four. I assume we'd only have a few minutes, so I tried to prepare in that vein, so I'll save you some time. I realize this is a massive plan, and it's in process since the 80s, and I appreciate your time that you spent on it. And you're not going to please everybody, and that's never our goal. I'll only address a few areas because I think that with the time that we thought we had available, that's all we could do, and that's all I want to do tonight. With the expanded time and with another session, I think we could be more explicit on what the citizens are looking for in terms of a comprehensive plan. I would just, and I'm going to focus pretty much on just your page 2.12, but first I just wanted to suggest that I thought also that part of the comprehensive plan could focus on some zoning issues, and that's that I think we really need to have an RMU and a TOD zone. I think the plan should address that, and we need to consider those zoning categories, and we've not had much luck getting that done in terms of ordinance or plan-to-date, and I think those are really important. We have a lot of arguments over whether or not the apartments are appropriate or whether we're saving the retail, but an RMU category in Denver, when we were working on Blueprint Denver, solved all the programs, solved all the plans, solved all the issues. And by doing that, I think we'd solve issues instead of creating questions about where we're headed and what we're going to do. I also think that in terms of the small area plans, Littleton's Mineral Avenue has never been addressed, and that's a concern of mine. I know the South Park area feels estranged from my time walking that area, to the point where they've created their own districts, their own metro districts, their own plans as to how they're going to operate. I know in our area, Littleton's Mineral Avenue has never been addressed as a small area plan under our new wording, new definition, and we got an apartment complex we didn't want, that we didn't plan for. And so A, it's a surprise, and B, it's not necessarily going to meet with the citizens' suggestions. The only area I wanted to address since it is so massive is just 2.12 in terms of a paragraph and page number, and that's the emphasis on annexation. We all know we have a landlocked city, except for Trailmark, and annexation might make sense, except the city's 0 for 1 on annexations as far as I'm concerned with Trailmark. We have residential areas that aren't able to pay their way. They're not happy. The city thinks they spend too much money out there. And I know from experience and being out there that they're not happy with the status of their taxes and the response for police and fire in the Trailmark subdivision. To further explore more annexation with that experience seems to me like a direction that we don't want to head. I don't think we want to focus on annexation as a basis for a sustainable city. That doesn't make sense. If you annex somebody that's not able to pay in terms of the sales tax for the funding of the city operations, you're buying yourselves a liability and not an asset. And I think Littleton's fine the way it is in the sense of the size, and we need to focus on our retail base and to make that available. We've converted way too much retail to residential, and I don't think to explore doing that even more in paragraph 2.12 is going to work. I was only prepared for a few minutes tonight, so that's the emphasis of what I wanted to give you, and I appreciate your time and your effort. I know it's difficult, but I'd rather face these issues now than have to face them down the road, and thank you.
I am Betty Harris. I live at 6281 South Cedar Street. First of all, I wanted to say thank you because you're citizens and you are representing the citizens in general for the work that you've done on this plan, and I know it was not easy. The wording is nice, the planning is a bit vague in spots, and it reminds me of how everybody can use the Bible to support their own particular ideas, so I think it needs to be firmed up a bit, but the pictures are very nice. I would have appreciated it, as you said earlier, that there were more photos of the city, our city, such as areas where maybe an outdoor café might fit, instead of photos of all these other cities, because we are truly unique. And mostly, we'd like to stay that way. I would have appreciated a copy of the Metrovision Plan as an attachment so that it would be easier for me to review. The plan says it's incorporated by reference, but I didn't have anything to refer to. That aside, I'd like to state that the preface to the old plan was enlightening, and I think it should be considered as one of the best parts of that plan, and it states, "In Littleton's approach, planning is a process of preparing for those things which are likely to happen, and it seeks to bring about those things which the citizenry wished to happen." Knowing that you're citizens and you represent the citizens, then how can we, the other citizens, feel comfortable that this plan deals with those things which are likely to happen? And how do we know what the board and the city council seeks to bring about those things which the citizens wish to happen? How can this happen when the plan itself does not discuss or mention those things which are likely to happen? Demographics is in the document, but nothing shows how that information will be used to determine what is likely to happen. I'm a bit confused by one suggestion in the plan that refers to a downtown amphitheater. In my experience, those are usually pretty good-sized places with a very nice view, and I can't figure out what houses or stores are going to have to be removed in order to make one, so I thought that was a bit funny. I suppose a review every five years is a good thing, but we really need to plan out further based on projected citizens' demographics. What happens when all of us old folks actually do die off and our houses are sold? When is that likely to happen? Why is the city not working to increase the appropriate housing for seniors? And don't say that high-density apartments fit that need. It does not, unless it is strictly senior housing, since mixed housing with partying young people will not work. And safety is a major factor for the elderly. Without thinking and planning for those things that are likely to happen, you may not notice what is happening. I've spent a great deal of time walking the streets of our city in the last few months, and I see a great deal of change. Houses are selling pretty quickly, they are being remodeled, et cetera, and young families are moving in. On our one block, two new families with kids have moved in in the last 12 months, and another house has just been put on the market. And we have two houses that are full of very old, feeble folks that are going to be moving in the next five years. So a lot of things are already happening. Some definitions that bother me, and I did read them. Transformative action, action that will result in marked change for the better. Who decides what is better? Transformative perspective, the viewing of things accurately and in their true relative importance, resulting in a marked change for the better. Who does the viewing? How do the citizens provide input? How do the citizens get heard? Recent experiences with the city council shows that the majority were not interested in what the citizens had to say and suppressed citizens' efforts at impacting the decisions being made by the council. How do we know this won't continue? The separate neighborhood plans are interesting, and I did read those too, and it appears that most work has been done on the South Santa Fe Corridor Plan. Overall, I believe it appears on the face of it to be well-thought-out. Hopefully, any actual changes offered in the future will fit and follow this plan. It does appear that the Littleton Boulevard corridor study and the South Broadway corridor study are missing from the documents provided. I understand they're not included at this point. And I do have great concerns about the lack of information and also on what it might contain that's not being presented tonight. So, but overall, thank you very much.
Lou Sullivan. Oh, does not wish to speak, opposed to the comp plan as it is. Nancy Berger, does not wish to speak, and is opposed as is Keith Bagley. Kent, sorry. After that, Jack Randall.
Good evening, members of the planning board. My name is Kent Bagley. I live at 1467 West Briarwood Avenue. And I want to congratulate the board and the council and the citizens that were involved as were demonstrated in Dennis's presentation. The plan that we are talking about changing was adopted in 1981. It was started in the late 70s, like 1977. It's about time that we had a new comprehensive plan, one that is general and provides direction. My past experience as the chair of this board from about 2005 to 2008 and the efforts that were made, Mr. Rudnicki was on the, what was then the commission, not the board. It's about time that this city had a new comprehensive plan, a general, citywide comprehensive plan. It's not meant to be super detailed. That's why we're talking about corridor plans, small area plans, the two plans that have funding through the Denver Regional Council of Governments for the RTD stations at Downtown and Mineral to the tune of about $200,000 in Dr. Cog money are going to be a step in providing you with more definition. That's where definition comes from. It's not, this is some direction for decisions that are made that relate to policy. I've been the planning director for the City of Aurora previously and have had extensive activities related to the development of comprehensive plans, neighborhood plans, and neighborhood plans take time and they have to be done with a lot of input from citizenry, but they have to be engaged. And what you often find in the engagement of citizens, I think it can be seen by tonight, unless your ox is being gored, you're not there. So I think that this plan and the process that you've talked about, sure, there needs to be more engagement of the public, but you've already defined that you've tried to reach out to the public, and you have gotten input in the past. The comp plan is important for, as you know, establishing goals and policies and that general direction of where the city is going to be moving in the future. If we look at page 1.4 and we go back to 1980, and the household side. If we look at page 1.4 and we go back to 1980, and the household size in 1980 at 2.65, who would have thought that in 2010, 30 years later, that it would be 2.25? It shows an aging population of this city, and the demographics are such that lots of families are two people in a home with very, very few children. That may change over time. It would be nice to think that that might happen. You can also look at the median ages. I mean, if we go back to the 1980 count, the largest number of people by age group was ages about 15 to 25 in 1980. Now where is it? It's about 55 to 65. I mean, all that does is demonstrate that this is an aging community in this overall metro area of 2.8 million people, and there are only 40,000 people here. This is a tool that's utilized by citizens and the staff to try and come up with the best decisions that can be made. And although all comprehensive plans attempt to be perfect, none of them are. The day that they are made, they're almost out of date. They're like you going and getting a CAT scan, an MRI, or a, an X-ray. They're a slice in time. They're at a point in time. This is the point in time where this city needs to adopt a new comprehensive plan. I mean, you think about it, starting in 1977, and this is 2013, there's never been the opportunity to get a comprehensive plan fully redone. There have been some amendments that have been made, some cleanup that's been made. I mean, I can even talk to you about my heritage neighborhood. And there's talk about opening up Gallup. And I would tell you that that will be a major fight, and it's not even discussed anymore. But there are pieces of those neighborhood plans that need to be extracted, and they need to go back to the citizenry. That's really, really critical. But economic development goals for the city, the city has now adopted an economic development plan. I think that that's absolutely critical. And the vision on the part of the planning board, the city council, and also the city manager and the staff to get that done is a critical element. The comprehensive plans helps with capital improvement planning. And it also is utilized by the development community and the surrounding communities so that they understand what the vision is for the City of Littleton. I think it's much better to be looking ahead, which this plan has a, is focused on, looking ahead. And rather than in the rearview mirror of 1981, we can't wait around for another year or two years to get a citywide comprehensive plan completed. It needs to be updated frequently, meaning every five years at a minimum. And the small-area plans, the corridor plans, the neighborhood plans that you're talking about will add specificity that's been talked about tonight and definition in those particular areas. The woman that wants to know what's going to happen on her corner, that's impossible for a comprehensive plan to even think about or to provide definition for. I would say keep up the good work. I would tell you that as an RTD director, the, the nature of comprehensive plans throughout the metropolitan area have been very impactful for the development of our Fast Trax program. We would not be where we are with our Fast Trax program and getting it funded without the participation of local governments interested in changes in their comprehensive plan. Although our Fast Trax program really doesn't affect Littleton specifically, it will with the extension, which I hope we will see happen in the not-too-distant future. So, thank you for your good efforts. Keep it up, and Godspeed. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Jack Randall, and then Dave Metcalf, and then anyone else who hasn't signed up can address the board.
Good evening, Jack Randall. I've been involved in planning commissions elsewhere, both sides of the table. You are the first line of defense on a comprehensive plan for the citizens, not the staff, not the developer. You decide if something that is put before you meets the comprehensive plan. And anything that the staff says about, they say, "We find that it does." If you don't find that it does, you say, "No," because you make the decision. Then it can go on to a higher decider of the city council. And I recommend that the comprehensive plan says that you are the finders of fact on that and that the staff recommendations, they don't even talk, they shouldn't even talk about the comprehensive plan. It should be the people up here, and you, if you get up there, making those decisions about if it meets the comprehensive plan. The specifics here, and I really appreciate the fact that we may have more time, so I'll cut down a bunch of the stuff I were going to scream about. You talked about municipal annexations. I think there's one tiny corner in the northeast part of the city where it's neither Inglewood, Littleton, and it's just Arapoo County, but it's all residential. Other than that, we're up against other cities all the way around. An annexation out, as we did in Trailmark, is a headache. And I think it shouldn't be even be stated in here as a possibility. Merger maybe, but not an annexation. On 2.3 of the, one with the racers on the front, you say, "Underperforming properties," this is number seven, "under policies," to be redeveloped. This document doesn't seem to recognize the morphing of shopping centers, the large buildings in them, into community centers. They become churches, schools, and they have other uses other than producing revenue for the city. And if the owner, and I believe that there are, there are examples of shopping centers that were bought by a church, and they expand their own uses, and members of the community take advantage of it. But it'd be real easy for a staff to say, "Wait a minute, that's underperforming for our purposes. We're not bringing in income." Property owner may be perfectly happy with it. And I don't think that the concept of underperforming should be in here at all. That should talk about what you can do to make changes, but not underperforming. Mention that new commercial development is to be appropriately buffered from adjacent uses. And I think the mixed-use commercial development on the bottom needs to be buffered from the residential on top. I've got some kind of problem with that concept, the way it's stated. On, and a real deadly one is on 2.7, Policies Number Eight. You endorse and adopt by reference, which means that whole document is part of this, the Metro Vision 2035 Plan approved by Dr. Cog in 25, or as it may be supplemented or amended. I think you can adopt the one that was in 2005 without reading it, but you can't add that last sentence. You're just saying, "Whatever you guys got, we buy." And I think that last sentence needs to be pulled. I will send in the rest of the comments by email. I really thank you for taking the time to look at this in more detail. And the November 5th setting, I think, was premature, but I think you can handle it. Thank you.
Thank you. Dave?
My name is David Metcalf. I live at 7870 South Hill Drive. Given the five-years-plus experience that many of us have shared, I think you'll trust my sincerity when I say that I respect the time and effort you've put into this. Since 2005, almost three dozen citizens of Littleton have labored on the planning commission, another two dozen on the Littleton 2030 Plan. They amassed piles of data, charts, graphs, maps, tried to make sense of it, find patterns within them. They've done, we've done field surveys of existing conditions in surrounding communities, similar and dissimilar. We've evaluated lessons learned, both on the ground and by way of reports from these other cities and their own websites. We've assessed the comprehensive plans and their successes and failures, tried to judge their applicability to Littleton's situation. We've asked questions of staff and outside experts regarding concepts like number of rooftops and mixed-use factors and how they reinforce each other or conflict. We've commended Golden's comprehensive plan for its foresight in insisting that development in general and rezoning in particular demonstrate clearly full compliance with all goals and policies in the comprehensive plan without exception. We've talked of, as recently as this past March, of further levels of detail to be produced in the comprehensive plan. I have to say, I see little of it here. What's even, and that's even more disappointing than the fact that it's taken eight years to get us to this point. In 40 years of planning for buildings, groups of buildings, and entire school districts, I've always believed that you go into planning with the notion that God is in the details. The idea of warning, warding off the devil in the details is as those details start to accumulate and conflict. In this case, there are no details, which leaves me to assume that the details will show up in hastily-presented, sketchily-reviewed proposals from developers and in decisions from city council that fly in the face of even the general principles stated in the comprehensive plan. This presents an amorphous vision, so generic as to justify almost, or rationalize almost, anything. Throughout, it gives an appearance of promising a better city, not necessarily a better Littleton. Overall, I see it as a legacy to Jim Taylor's 2011 demand that a plan not tie the city council's hands. And surely, nobody's hands are going to be tied by this plan any more than the, than most offensive linemen have their hands tied by the NFL's rule against holding on the line of scrimmage. In the end, if the board recommends this plan as it is and council approves it, protecting and serving the lasting interests and values of Littleton will depend on how vigilantly and steadfastly its citizens insist that staff, the planning commission, and city council live up to the long-term vision implied, but not detailed, in this plan, rather than yielding to short-term gains that favor a few over the many. I've never believed that a committee could make better decisions than a few well-informed, well-directed, transparently-reviewed few individuals. That's how we ended up with a camel instead of a horse. I also don't believe in Washington's current vogue for changing the rules until you get what you want. Best two out of three, hey, no, I lost. How about best three out of five, or best five out of seven? Nevertheless, I have little hope, from what I see here, that things are going to change from what we've endured over the last eight to 10 years, especially with the plan as it is and those who are in control. I see little reflected of what was observed, heard, weighed, learned, and contributed on my watch when we were wrestling with this project for the last five or six years. So whatever you do with it, I'm here tonight to respectfully insist that my name be deleted from the document. I want nothing to do with it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to address the board? Yes, sir.
Thank you, members of the board. My name is Don Brunz. I live at 7332 South Costilla Street in Littleton. And I appreciate the thoughtful comments of my neighbors here this evening. And I just had some thoughts I wanted to present for the board's consideration. For more than four decades, I worked professionally as a planner. And one of the things that we always wrestle with is this question of level of detail, which has been raised here tonight. Someone once said, "The devil's in the details," or another planner said, "The real problem with plans is detailing the devil." So the challenge here is really the question of level of details. There's policies in here, and I'm sorry, I didn't get a chance to look at this until a few moments ago, but I will spend more time, and I'm glad you have another chance for us to comment. But one of the things that we use as planners, and for your consideration, I'd like to have you think about this, is there are policies in here and there are goals, but there are no objectives. And we talk a lot about smart objectives. That is, that they're specific, measurable, achievable, relevant, and time-bound. Certainly, that level of smart objective for a comprehensive plan is different than it is for a project plan. But it has to say something to hold us accountable and to provide the kind of definitions so that we all know what you're talking about. And I think one of the other comments that was made here this evening is that regarding, for example, the words transformative action, and the question was asked, "For the better." As planners, we deal with the whole question of benefits. We're hopefully doing this to benefit someone. So the question is, what kinds of benefits? There are benefits for individuals. There are societal benefits. There are economic benefits. There are environmental benefits, which both deal with the natural environment as well as the cultural environment. But these things are, they have, they fight. They don't all agree. So to what degree are these things addressed? And are they balanced? And are they integrated? So I think that might help. Hope that's helpful, some helpful thoughts for your consideration. Appreciate the opportunity to comment.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. With that, we'll close the public hearing. And I guess there's no applicant, other than, unless you need to ask Dennis anything, or otherwise we can hear a motion. Let me first, there's actually different courses of action. We can move to adopt it as-is. We can move to recommend that we continue it with the, for the planning session and then rehear it on the 28th. And then we can recommend approval with changes at this time. So we have different options. Any, anyone who has a motion, feel free to present it.
I'll speak, I have no intention of trying to approve anything tonight. So I guess I'm going to choose choice number three. I move that the public hearing be continued. I hope I'm picking the right one. I want to do the study session. Let me just state what I want, and then we can clean up the language here in a second. My vote would be that we move forward with a study session on the 16th, which I think has already been sketched down, where the planning board can comment openly and publicly on what we've heard, at which point we then revise another draft and then make a decision or put ourselves in a position, should we all be in agreement. And I'm very cautious of saying that, because I don't know that I'm going to like what we have on November, on October 28th either. But that we are in a position that we've had our own blessing and the opportunity to move forward. So if we had to vote tonight, my vote would be an absolute no. And if we can turn that into a motion, my vote would be...
We'll make the motion, and then we'll...
Do a study session and then a second meeting on the 28th.
And then we'll have a discussion.
With all that commentary.
Is there a second on that long motion?
With caveats, yes.
Okay. We have a second. There's a, there's a motion to continue this hearing to next regular scheduled hearing or meeting on October 28th discussion.
Excuse me, Ms. Shawn. I don't think that was the motion, actually. I thought the motion was to hold a study session on October 16th and then have staff bring back a draft for your consideration on October 28th.
Oh.
Board Member Graham, am I summarizing that correctly?
Yes, on the 16th. Yes, I'd like a newly revised draft for the 28th. So in those two instances, yes, that is my recommendation, but that does not imply that I'm going to be satisfied with what I get on the 28th.
Absolutely not. At that point, you could make a motion to have additional study sessions, or you could vote on the, the plan at that time, or have another hearing two weeks later.
So the motion is to conduct a study session on the 16th and then have a, a new hearing, public hearing with a new draft on the 28th of October.
There'll be additional-
That's what I said.
-public comment on the 28th?
Thank you.
Is that the plan? Is that the way everyone understands additional public comment?
Yeah.
That's what staff, yes.
On the 28th, public-
To share a public comment on a revised draft.
Right, all right. I would, if I can make a couple of comments, I'd like to see that the citizens get their comments in as quickly as possible, give us an opportunity to review them. I know we're meeting on the 16th, it's not very long. If you can get your comments in tomorrow, certainly we'll look at additional comments later, but I do appreciate a lot of the comments this evening, definitions, I think we can work on those. I know a good attorney would argue the definition of is, so we can't have every definition spelled out to everyone's satisfaction, but I think we have a lot of things that we can't add there. We looked at the specificity over the past four or five years. I was on the board with Mr. Metcalf and Mr. Bagley as well when we looked through a lot of these things. So we, we fleshed out a lot of this. We've seen many, many changes over that timeframe, and in all honesty, we had very little public input when we tried and tried and tried to get public input. I understand, until you have something you can see, it's hard to give input, but we, I think we went out of our way to try to engage the public to say, "Give us your comments. What do you want to see?" I do believe that a lot of this will be fleshed out in the, in the small area plans, and I think we'll see a lot of more specificity in there, but we cannot get down to somebody's corner and say, "This is what's going to happen in five or 10 or 30 years from now in that plan." But I am all in favor of putting this off until the 16th or 28th, or the end of the year, if we need to.
Any other discussion? I just want to reiterate, and thank you, everyone, for your, your input, and I'm glad we allowed time to express comments. It is a balance in terms of detail and not, but I will say, with all respect, we do have a vision for the city. It's on the wall in that room in there that the city council adopted, and we use that vision to adopt a vision for the comp plan. And so the citywide plan, although it may have some more detail that could be added and more explanation, the citywide plan is a vision for the city, a big-picture vision, like any corporate. America would have a mission statement, and they would have a vision, and then they would adopt other studies, reports, in our case, sub-area plans or neighborhood plans, to begin to dial down into the neighborhoods where the people live and let them, as groups, decide what their neighborhood is going to look like and, and what they want in that corner. We can't say what's going to be in the corner, but we can say in more detail what that neighborhood should look like, just like the downtime plan has done recently. And then on top of that, and I see it more of a pyramid, where the, the comp plan is the base, is the foundation, and as you move up the pyramid to more stricter documents, you end up at the top or near the top with your zoning code. We have a lot of work to do on our zoning code, so we have a process of looking at various documents, and unfortunately, it doesn't happen overnight. So the comp plan is step one. Neighborhood plans are step two, and as we are doing that, we have to also look at our subdivision regulations and our zoning regulations to say, "Are there things in the zoning regulation that are 30 years old also that do not, that allow things that we don't want to happen?" But ultimately, at the very top of the pyramid is this board, staff, and the city council. Even with all these documents that help guide us to the top to make a decision, it's, it's us as professionals and volunteers and citizens to evaluate every application with all these supporting documents and make a final decision. Even though there may be some ambiguity and some wording, it's up to the current-day staff, current-day council, current-day board, and current-day citizens to interpret it for that day. Something written 30 years ago was written for another generation. It may be applicable today, and that's what we have to decide, if we bring that forward. But there may be things that we leave in the past and we don't bring it forward, such as bringing the road through Euclid. I mean, I agree, some of the things in the neighborhood plans just don't make sense today. So I think we have to, as a board, take everything that was said, and thank you very much for everything and everything that we're going to get hopefully tomorrow, and begin to decide where that balance falls and does this document reach it. And then we look forward to the, to the first and second and third neighborhood plan and really get down to the, more of the street level, so. Now let's call for the vote.
Can I have one more comment?
Just as a point of reference, people were talking about annexations, and we, we are landlocked. We are not landlocked, and I'm not advocating any of this, but going west towards Southwest Plaza is all unincorporated Jefferson County, which is adjacent to the city, which could be annexed. And going south, the city of Highlands Ranch is not a incorporated city, so anything, there are tens, if not hundreds of thousands of square feet of retail resident, retail commercial property just on the south side of county line 470 that is not in a city and could be annexed. Not that I would advocate any of those, but just as a point of reference. Thank you.
One question. Is the 16th set in stone? Because I know the 23rd had been bantered about.
I think it's set now.
Okay. I'm not here, so that's why I was asking.
He motioned for the 16th.
I motioned.
Well, we'll talk later.
She knows where I live.
Okay, let's call for the vote. Motion carries, so we will move forward. Thank you. Let's see, what else do we have? Not really anything. No general business, no reports, no anything, so.
Staff reports? Dennis, nothing? Come on.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Oh, second? On favor? Aye, okay. We are adjourned.